I'd like to call the November Regular Board Meeting to order. Let's record show all board members present, except for Mr. Ritter. If you would, with me, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would, please silence your cellphones if you have them. We do have one speaker tonight, and I'd like to read the Board of Education welcomes comments from the audience about the issues being discussed. It's recommended that requests to speak be submitted prior to the beginning of the meeting. Comments will be limited to five minutes for each speaker and will be timed. It is inappropriate to address the board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or in the district office. First speaker is Jeff Radl.
My concern that I wanted to come before today was about a couple of policies that I came across where I spoke with one of the board members here about a year ago. And I was questioning a couple of things, why Dr. Ritter doesn't talk to parents, which has now come to my attention from other parents that are showing some expressed concerns, that they call and you won't take phone calls even if you have agreements with an administrator. And that would be the first question I would have. And then the second question, when I read and go through the school policies, you have policy statements that if a student has a grievance, they can go before a committee or board or they have a resource. If a teacher has a problem with a situation, they can go before a committee, but there is no grievance for parents. And the only recourse a parent has is to go and defy what may have, may not have happened to them, get it in a courtroom, and hire lawyers. And that would be where I'm at, where it's like, you know. I did talk to Dennis Cooper, who's in charge of superintendents on the western half of the state of Missouri. He told me whether or not a school has a policy statement that addresses parents' grievances, that they're a state statute, that that parent can go before the board and address a private meeting to address specific grievances that they would have with the school in question. My question was about inappropriate teacher behavior and the fact that I received emails from an administrator which were later repudiated by every member of the classroom where they have, and I'll leave this for you, I have it to continue today. I would like to meet with you. I asked and called your office a week, two weeks ago to meet with you. I was told that I would have to write you a letter. I can call any member of this board and they'll call me back. So what I would like to do is just meet with you and addresses in private with you because I would like to talk to you about my experiences with nothing else with the school, whether or not we agree or disagree or agree to disagree. I also ask for specific legal definitions of the letter I got dated in April that would bring me into defiance of any legal definition of what's in that letter and what did I do wrong. I also was called a psychopath by the person that I was questioning. His principal's here tonight. He didn't deny it. The school hasn't denied it. And when I talked to your assistant, she said that you don't get involved because it's down at the lower level and you leave it where it was at. Those are the people I have questions about. They've never said that didn't happen and have never apologized. I'd like proof that I'm a psychopath. I'd also like proof that teacher bullying didn't occur. And I'm not just coming here as a parent that didn't, that doesn't know anything. I subbed in a middle school ISS classroom and I've experienced firsthand teacher behavior that would not be classified as appropriate. So I would like to have a meeting, and if we can't have a meeting, I would like to have a meeting with this board and request a meeting with this board to go over the grievance I had. This is 28 signatures from the classroom, and only after this surfaced in this school and I let the school system know it happened, that letter came and accusations were made against me. Some accusations, one accusation in particular was retracted 24 hours later. My story has never changed. The schools has. Thank you.
Moving on to modification agenda, does any board members have any modifications to make to the agenda? If not, the agenda will stand as presented. President's report. I've probably only got a couple of things to talk about, and I think I'll talk about typically, most of you know I know, Ms. Callen knows, that a couple, three times a year, several of the board presidents around the area get together and just kind of talk about issues and talk about things that are coming down the road. And we did have one of those three weeks ago, and a very, very good meeting. Most of the topics that we had were not new. Budget, finances, then budget, and finances some more. So, but, you know, a lot of the things, I know you read in the paper, some of the things that Fair Grove is doing with respect to year-round school, or change in schedules and some of those kind of things, which are some exciting things that some of those schools are addressing to address some of the financial issues and also how to deal with the lag, learning lag for kids on long vacation, summer school, or summer vacation. So it's a really good opportunity to network with the board presidents and see what's going on in those other districts. So, and that's really, I mean, there's nothing came of it other than that, but just thought to let you know that we did meet and will continue to do that. As once again, at our regular board meeting, we do want to recognize those businesses and organizations that are in our Partners in Education program. We'd like to recognize several of them before. We have one special one tonight that we'd like to present and talk about their partnership. But we have Advantage Insurance, Christ Episcopal Church, City of Springfield Solid Waste Management, Drew University, Andrew Weimer, Drew University, Chris Craig, we got both of them, East Grand Community Service, High Street Baptist Church, Hoover Musical Music Company, Isabel's House, Ken's Handyman Service, Ozark Peacemakers Quilt Guild, Ozark's Football League, Ozark's Technical Community College, and South Haven Baptist Church. And certainly thanks to them for all their effort and support to help our kids in school. At this time, I would introduce Josie McVale with a special partnership that she would like to present.
Good evening. To continue with our monthly feature of a Partner in Education, this evening we will hear from Chase Card Services. They started their partnership with the district approximately five years ago and currently serve students at McGregor, Williams, and Glendale. They provide services for hundreds of kids through different programs like Lunch Buddies, financial literacy workshops, Food for Thought, School Supply Drives, and Students Go to Work. Here to tell us a little bit more about those partnerships and this tremendous partnership is Erica Frazier with Chase Card Services.
Well, thank you, and thank you for inviting me to share our story with you this evening. Basically, what I'll do is just kind of give you an overview of those programs and just a few details, and then, of course, if you have any questions about any of the things we're doing, I'd love to answer those for you. To start out with our two elementary school partnerships, we are partners specifically with McGregor and Williams Elementary. I honestly don't know how those two partnerships came about other than they were selected based on their Title I status, and they've just kind of continued to grow. We added Williams to the program, I believe, two years ago. And we try to really mirror our efforts so that the programs that we're doing at the schools are really the same programs for both elementary schools. We have about 40 volunteers right now that participate in the Lunch Buddies program where the employees basically agree to spend a lunch hour once per week with a specific assigned student. They go over, have lunch with them, play a game, do reading, any kind of tutoring that that particular student may be identified as needing. The next, we have the Food for Thought Backpack Program. We have five teams of anywhere from six to eight people specified for both schools. They rotate throughout the month and actually go over and do all of the packing of those backpacks and all of the distribution for the foods, loading the cabinets and making sure that that's ready to go out to the students each month. We also do something called, we named it a Wishmas Tree, and we have adopted the third grade for both of these schools. And each holiday season, we actually put up a holiday tree in our lobby. We have the students actually color ornaments. They put a couple of details about them so we can make it really personal for our employees that are involved. Sometimes you get things for people, you never see faces, you never know anything about them, so it becomes very impersonal. So we have the kids color it, they tell us their favorite color, their favorite cartoon, just any little details that can really make it a little more personal for our employees that volunteer. They then buy them specific items, so every student receives the same thing. It's a generated list based on a few pleasures, but mostly things that are probably most needed or identified needs. So standard things such as gloves, hats, socks, pencils, coloring books, books, flash cards, just things that have an educational value or an actual need at home for those particular kids. We take those over usually the week before Christmas, do a little holiday party with the students, give them puzzles to do, and then our volunteers actually help them open their gifts. The next thing we do is a financial workshop, and we actually bring those students onsite each spring, all 88 kids of the fourth grade, so it's a very fun day for us. We bring them onsite, we do tours with them, we do character development, leadership development, team building type activities, and we actually put them through a very simple but great budgeting seminar as well to where they actually get, I think we used beans last year, and they had to pay for their car and pay for their home and different things. Then last but not least, we do, the last day of school, we sponsor their field day, so we send usually about 20 volunteers to each school to manage each activity so that the teachers aren't pulled out of classes to manage those activities for the day and they can really focus on staying with the kids. We've done other things such as art contests, judges, and been math and reading buddies, and those are just kind of more sporadic through the year as needed. For Glendale, the first thing we do during the year normally is their readers' recognition party. This is a program where the comm arts teachers and librarians challenge kids to read at least three books throughout the year from a specified list. If those students do that, then they're actually honored by being able to participate in a school-wide vote on what their favorite book was, and then a pizza party identifying which book won the favorite. So it's kind of fun for those students to go and see if the one that they liked the best was everyone else's favorites as well. We also bring Glendale onsite, and we have one particular classroom that we work with and that's kind of identified as students that may have challenges either in their lives educationally or just outside of school, either one. We bring them onsite and we do financial literacy, including credit, credit cards. We use our Clear and Simple website, has little budgeting tools that they can play with, like if I stopped going out to eat every day for lunch, how much money would I save each month, just really hands-on things for the students to get to experience that. We also do some interviewing tips with them, and then we really put them on the spot and we have some of our hiring managers divide them into groups of five and ask them some real questions that they would receive if they went through an interview with us, so that we always get some great feedback and some great answers to some of those. Also, their Swoop program is a program put together that basically helps fight tardies and helps really press that attendance issue with the students and being on time, which is something I think all employers can appreciate. So we sponsor that and help provide the recognition for that at the end of each term with the parties. And then one more that Josie didn't mention, and I forgot to mention it to her, but we also have a unique relationship with Parkview High School as well with our Chase Leadership Academy. And that's a program that really we're unique in the United States that we actually have that. There aren't very many others in our enterprise, but it's a program where 30 students are accepted into a year-long course of modules that are on leadership, budgeting, teamwork skills, all kinds of things. They come over once a month, they're graded on attendance and participation all through the year. Each student that's accepted into the program actually gets a $500 scholarship to the college of their choice. And then at the end, whoever qualifies and meets all the requirements throughout the year, they get to write an essay and compete for a $1,000 scholarship. So that's another really great program. Of course, all of the things that our employees go and do for the schools all throughout the year, we also put into our grant system and request grants to the J.P. Morgan Chase Foundation and basically as a result of all of their hours. So it's a unique partnership. It's something that the employees love doing, going onsite or having those students onsite is probably some of the funnest days that we see there. So we appreciate you, you know, allowing and supporting these type of partnerships. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you guys have any questions, I guess?
I think it's great. I'm assuming that you're going to grow and grow and eventually you'll pick up 10 or 12 more schools.
We would love to.
That's the general idea, right?
That's the general idea, yes.
Thank you.
Great, very impressive.
That's great. Erica, thank you so much for being here. And I know Chase has been a strong partner for many years when you got here, so thank you for you and all your employees and the company. So appreciate that. Thank you, Matt. Moving on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Ritter.
I just want to mention that last week I had the opportunity to serve on the accreditation team for Rockwood. Rockwood is part of our comparability and it's listed as the top performing district in the state of Missouri. In my review, their staff is just extremely talented, and so is ours, but they get the cream of the crop as far as St. Louis is concerned, and their kids are very talented. And so they, I think that is really the driving force as far as their performance is concerned. They do have a good system, a very good system. One thing I did note, you see, it's a suburban type of setting with about 12 different mini communities inside of it. They don't have near the partnerships that we have, can't even come close. And I noticed that the, it's really a system that stands alone, and then the others kind of cooperate, but there's not that type of relationship or integration with their communities. And so I do see quite a difference in that way. And the other thing that I really want to mention is that it's a fairly wealthy district as well. We're talking about well over $1,000 more per student, so it's around 20 million more in their operation budget than what we spend in our operation budget. So I'm not saying they have fat, I'm saying that they're pretty comfortable right now, but they are looking for ways to reduce their budget as, yeah, reduce their budget because of the finances as much as we are. And so I just thought I'd share that with the board as well. So anyway, another thing that I did experience last week, I had an experience with the chamber brings in, or brought in some talent as far as diversity is concerned, some diversity training. And I and Kim, Kimbrough, Nicole, Nicole Kimbrough, as well as Lester, I can't think of his last name.
Radcliffe.
Radcliffe. And I sat with the team of professionals from all over the community and had a conversation and went through some sessions and really learned an awful lot. And so I think it's something that we need to take a serious look at as far as how to further train our staff in that area as well. So, but our school year is going well, our attendance is very, very strong. And what's interesting is, I'm going to say it here, Reed is leading the way as far as attendance in middle school. And while, maybe I shouldn't say it that strong, they're one of the leaders as far as middle school, and so I think phenomenal things are going on at Reed as well as other places. So that's all I have at this time.
Moving on to focus group survey results, Dr. Ritter, you want to say anything before Mr. Manas comes up?
What I'm going to share with you tonight is some really very thorough visits, examination of budget, and issues that came out of our discussion we had back in July, you might remember that. And then we focused in on certain initiatives that came from a board retreat. And so Mr. Manas here had some focus groups and quite extensive discussion with, and spent a great deal of time, and so I really think, and did a good job of listening. So we're going to share with you quite a bit of information tonight and kind of hold onto your table, if you would, a little bit, because this is serious times for us as far as our ability to offer a program within the revenue that we have. So, Mr. Manas, please.
Thank you, Dr. Ritter. As I mentioned in the last board meeting, we did a number of focus groups that we set up through a random selection, but in addition to that, I did have the opportunity to meet with Dr. Ritter's advisory groups. In addition to that, I spent some time in the buildings this last week up through early this week, working with teachers in small groups, in some cases principals, and in some cases one-on-one interviews with teachers to go back over the information that I've been learning through the focus groups. So what I have for you tonight in a pretty pure form is the capturing of the comments made regarding the four specific topics that were asked to look into, as well as some general comments about non-mandated programs that we would look at in terms of budgeting. So we'll briefly go over these. Some items we'll go over in a little more detail. We did, as you know, talk about extending the transportation boundaries for middle school and elementary school to 2 and 2.5 miles, an estimated savings of $110,000, not as significant as perhaps you may have thought, but some of the concerns were based on the minimal savings versus the risk and disruption, safety of the children, obviously, negative impact on attendance, and concern about the streets being good for pedestrians and bicycles in those particular areas. And as I said, these are the concerns just voiced as we walk through these areas. Some additional input, a number of students, a number of stakeholders mentioned that students who pick up and drop off students are more supportive of that, obviously, and a number of individuals said that it's still the parent's responsibility, so as you look at cuts, take that in consideration. We did discuss the four-day week. There were a number, obviously, a number of concerns of something that is significant of a change to our system such as this. It is relatively new to our stakeholders for consideration, so a lot of this was their initial reaction to this proposal. We did learn that there is concern over longer days difficult for students because we've been extending the school day, not the school year, lack of childcare options for families, students would miss more class time for extracurricular activities. The thinking behind that is the extended school day, students would have to leave before they would have some of the class time to go to their games or activities, sports events, loss of meals for low-income students, and loss of learning time for at-risk students. Additional input, we did have some support for this particular approach, but I would say, it's very safe to say that even though individuals that say this would be a good fit for me, their main concern were for those that could not adapt to those schedules. So as you see, this reflected that there's some support there. I think that predominantly there was concern for those that could not adapt to that schedule. Some elementary teachers felt like it was, could be a benefit to have some additional time to drill into certain subject area. And to credit to our staff, all these topics, they said, we'll make things work, you know, if it comes down to it. Very good attitude about that, obviously. The three-tiered start times, we did give some specific times, although we are very quick to say that those were just examples, that we would have to work through those. Coincidentally, the main concern was the start times reflecting what research states is the best learning time for students at the high school, certainly high school, middle school level versus elementary. So matching those times with the times that we would be required to pick students up, obviously will have an impact on the savings and how we address that, but certainly that was their number one concern, and strain on families because of childcare needs. As we know from prior discussions about the three-tiered start times, that often comes down on the particular, the specific family's circumstances, how they feel about changing those times. Additional impact, input, impact of change more equitably distributed. If I were to weigh any of these to say there was support versus non-support, this was one I think that generally people say they could take a look at to be very supportive of consideration. Preference for earlier elementary start times, late secondary start times, that obviously matches the initial concern. The seven-period class schedule, I will say, I think I alluded earlier to the frankness and some of the emotion surrounding these focus groups. This had a lot of discussion, it drove a lot of interest from teachers because it is a significant change in the way they conduct class at this time and the approach they use. There's numerous concerns. I think for the most parts, you can see, they center around the ability to work one-on-one with students and collaboration with other teachers, the ability to take that class time specifically in science in classes that require a little more depth to get at the level that you would want to with the students. They find the block is very conducive to that. In certain cases, for instance, Kit Kappoo and Parkview, there are certain programs they feel like that assist with students across the board that would be impacted by a block to seven-period scheduled time. There is a concern, this next statement, I would like to make sure that there was a number, there are a number of comments that said, you know, if we do look at changing block schedules, it needs to be equitable, the cuts need to be equitable, whether it's a special program, a choice program, or whether it's just the regular classroom. I mentioned loss of lab time for science, and block schedule seems to be better suited for college prep. One thing that we did hear loud and clear from parents, counselors, and teachers, the awareness that we need to have a uniform schedule for certainly the high schools as students transfer to one program to another is problematic for them. So there is awareness of that, and even though concern over changing block scheduling, a common block is something that really did receive a tremendous amount of discussion and support for. There was concern over, there's input about shorter classes translate to more time on task. We did have a few teachers that said that the seven-period day timeframe fit better their particular subject matter and the way they would approach things. So there was some support, as you see on this slide for, and some additional input regarding the block versus seven-period. The non-mandated programs, we left that as a rather open-ended opportunity for input. And I think it's important to stress here, I will mention athletics and activities. Often the most common topic that comes up is to take a look at these particular programs. There was not a lot of interest in, particularly when we shared within the total budget for these. There was concern that additional cuts in that area would be problematic since we're very lean in those areas as well. So this one particular item that usually generates a lot more interest, actually in our focus groups did not, they did not spend a lot of time talking about these. The other topics, gifted ed obviously is an area a number of individuals are aware of. As you know, they're very passionate supporters of what gifted ed accomplishes for students, and those were certainly heard during the course of our discussions, as well as a discussion of cost per student and maybe perhaps a look at reshaping those types of programs. Everything else you see as we walk through, we spent a tremendous amount of time discussing professional development, and that was really from the focus groups. That was not scheduled for discussion for the most part. Those were areas that teachers and staff talked about changes in our system and the forces of making some additional cuts to look at certain areas. As we get into these, please know that it's very important to note that we captured these for further discussion. These particular items, we don't feel as if we have any definitive information on certainly, but we felt important to the credibility of the process to capture them and to provide those for further discussion. And as we walk through some of these, we will be addressing the process that cabinet and the superintendent will be going through in terms of taking a look at these particular items. So we had professional development, input concerning step-up in professional development. We had some discussion around CCI, and CCI facilitators was a common discussion within our focus groups. And then, of course, as you go on to look at some of the other areas, some of these you've seen before in prior input process, they're not uncommon to see some consideration in these areas. Any questions about the overall process or information we received in terms of feedback? Any questions about the overall process or information we received in terms of feedback?
The only one you mentioned, financial figure, was the extending the boundaries. Do you have any?
Sure. I'll share, I'll share those with you, the amounts that we shared with the group, and I apologize that-
That's okay. I'm just, I'm interested in like the cost savings with the three-tiered, the three-tiered-
The three-tiered was estimated $410,000 roughly. Now, you know, I'm assuming as you would work, maybe adjust those, that amount might go down, but that's the maximum you could obtain from that.
How about the, the change to the, away from block scheduling to seven-
Total for middle school and high school was around 4.1 million. And we shared those with the focus groups as well.
And I think the other question that I had, because there were a couple of references to step up, which is our deliberate attempt to, and really focused effort to support teachers. And is there a comparison of the cost per teacher to provide them that support versus what it costs us to recruit and replace a teacher?
These, these particular programs, the non-mandated, that were brought up by the focus groups, we did spend some time when appropriate, and they asked us specific questions. We did mention the data supporting the amount of, it would cost, that we are saving due to retention. And I must say, as there are a number of these types of non-mandated program suggestions, there was a lot of support for gifted ed, for step-up and gifted as well, but in particular step-up, it was clear that certain individuals felt it was vital to the school system to have some form of step-up in place. Often, the discussions were in support of the majority of these programs, but perhaps look at ways to save money by cutting back in certain areas within each program.
But I mean, we're not talking about needing to save $100,000 here and $100,000 there. I mean, we're talking millions of dollars that we are going to have to cut from our budget this year. And I think, I guess, I appreciate this input. It's pretty much what I expected, but to sit here at this board table and not think that we're going to have to make unpopular decisions that cut very worthwhile, very valuable programs to our students and to our staff, you know, we're just kidding ourselves. And so, you know, I appreciate the information. I think it's valuable to have, but, you know, to think we're going to get the kind of cost savings from, like I said, $100,000 here and $100,000 there is just, we're looking, we're looking for millions, so.
Would you want, would you want me to go over the frequent voter information?
I'll do this first.
Okay.
I agree with you. We're going to have to come up with far more than just $100,000 here and $100,000 there. Couple of things that I want to recommend, first of all. As we look at our budget, no matter how we look at it now, it's impacting the classroom pretty, pretty heavily. And, and it's going to impact achievement. I'm not saying we're going to back off. Our teachers are very, very good, very talented. It's going to call for more autonomy, but calling for more autonomy means we're going to be pulling away more and more support. So it's going to be more independent, as opposed to interdependent type of autonomy at the classroom as well as at the site. So the recommendations I have is, first of all, as far as the feedback we were getting from the focus groups, I think we need to step away from the four-day-week conversation for the time being. We do have some possibilities there as far as savings that, and also a way to kind of support teachers with that, and also the strategies we have with a performance series where we might come up with some kind of semblance of a day-a-month type of thing, and that'll save us some money. But we'll continue to process that, but step away from the pure four-day-week proposal. Also, the seven-period day, I think we need another year to look at that. And, and then also, as we're looking at that, we're also going to be looking for that consistency across all middle schools as well as across all high schools as far as schedules are concerned. So that'll be part of that discussion as well. So I'm proposing we step back from that for the time being. The next thing I think needs to happen is that there's going to be a program-by-program review. We've done that over the last couple of years. This time now, we're going to cut into the marrow of the bone. And so it's going to be a matter of some pretty heavy cuts in central office, as well as at the sites, as well as in the classroom. And it's going to be everything from transportation, food service, we're going to be looking at everything. And are we going to be consistent where we're going to have a percentage across the board? No. We're going to look at what value the program has, brings to our, our program, our overall program, and then eventually, and we have, we have the tools now to be able to do that in a much better way. Another one is the announcing, I'm talking about restructuring of the administrative office, I'm talking about craft, and it's going to be no later than January 18th. It'll probably be much earlier than that. I think the sooner I can announce that, the better off, so that eventually throughout the system, you can kind of see how the support works. And the board needs to be a part of that conversation, but I do think this is my job as far as how best to support the sites within the revenue that's available. I do think we have a very strong system in place right now, giving us outstanding results. And so my concern, as we, we do this, it's going to be pulling and changing responsibilities as far as working with the sites and with the kids and with the teachers. And so then also, as you see, examination of current year budget for projected budget shortfall for 2011, 2012. I do think that at the end of December, we need to kind of get a feel for the economy and see where it's at, and we may have to freeze or do something with our current budget to be able to, be able to help us with end of the year, depending on what the state is going to do and what the economy is looking around the state. Right now, it's looking favorable, but still favorable meaning it's flat. That's favorable anymore because usually favorable means it's going up. No, it's kind of stopped. And so in light of that, we still may have to put a freeze on some of our budget that we have set up for this year, and I think we're going to look into that, and it's really a week-to-week type of review. Another thing is, as far as, there's going to be, I suggest we develop a preliminary overview of the 2011, 2000 budget to facilitate additional discussion. In other words, we need to bring to the board a preliminary budget and what it looks like. And, and yeah, we may be projecting worst-case scenario, and it definitely will be worst-case scenario, but at least the board and the community will get a good feel of what that looks like. And then eventually, you know, what is it going to look like as, as far as our response to that as far as budget's concerned? We're way ahead, and I, so the caution I have to the board and to the community is, as we do this, and we anticipate, the more you anticipate, and things do not come to that place, you could end up with, we could end up with a very favorable situation and, therefore, help us with next year's budget, or it could be the other way around. But either way, we do need to project as fast as we can, and, and also, and both on the budget side as well, I mean, on the expenditure side as well as the revenue side. Then I am also going to direct the community relations department to continue to obtain external and internal feedback on the budget. And so in other words, this is ongoing. We got to make sure we're communicating, make sure everybody understands the value of that communication. We do not want anybody internally or in the community to feel like they haven't been hurt, and that's going to be a very, very important task or responsibility, not just for the communications department, but for everybody that's at the table making that decision. And so we want to give you that assurance that we're going to give everybody that, that opportunity to do that. So anyway, so that's really to respond to what you were saying, Mrs. Collins, as far as our ability to be able to step up to the plate, we're still, you know, we, we feel we're going to have to be very direct and very clear and make some major adjustments. And it's not going to be favorable to, and we're going to be hitting, getting into people's territory, and they're going to be very uncomfortable. And so we're going to, that's why we're going to allow conversations, and we need to have those conversations so that people can understand what's going on. So anyway, in light of that, before I take any questions, I'd like to have Mr. Manas share with you a survey that he's done with the community as far as possible, possible other ways to support budget, okay?
As we mentioned in the last board meeting, we did conduct a survey of voters who participated in the 2009 November election, which included both the city initiative to, to address pension plans as well as our, our bond issue. That was conducted over the course of last week in the traditional five minus-plus margin of error. Demographically, I wanted to share this with you. This is very close to what is traditionally our survey, the individuals who vote, and also how our surveys look in terms of participants. We did approach this in what we call tax threshold approach, where we allowed for a number of different options to be asked in terms of support. 15, 20, and 30 cents were the numbers that we used. Those were translated into what you're most familiar with, is $28 a year on a $100,000 home. And then it goes up to, on the 20 cent, it's the $38 a year, and then the 30 cent is the $58 a year. The blue represents the support for those particular items. I will note on tax threshold, you will obviously find more support in the, the number that offers the least amount of tax. So the more accurate surveys that we conduct specifically give the amount being requested, and then the items that will be impacted by this amount. But having said that, over the years, the tax threshold has been a good starting place in terms of identification of where people are comfortable with the beginning of the discussion in terms of possible investment to address shortcomings. So this was specifically tied to class size, and also the ability to pay teachers and be competitive with teacher salaries. So those were the only two items to attach to this particular survey. Any, any questions?
How much does, how much does the lowest, you know, based on our tax base, what does that increase represent in terms of additional revenue?
Probably have Mr.-
The 15 cents would result in about four and a half million dollars.
The lowest amount?
Yes.
Just four million?
Four and a half.
I know one, one thing with respect to, I know we're talking about 2011 and 2012. Don't forget 2012 and 13, because it's not going to be any better, if not worse.
And that's why, that's why the schedule thing.
Yeah, I just, I'm really concerned, not just next year, but the year after, that it's going to go south even more over the next couple of years unless something drastically turns around. Because I'm not hearing any new revenue from the state, none whatsoever. At least that's what, that's the story. And in fact, some programs that are out there now, you know, I throw it on the table, transportation, I think it's gone. I, I think that's, I don't see, I mean, I'm, that's a crystal ball, so I don't know what's going to happen next year, but I know that was an easy target last year. I can't imagine it not being a target next year. Summer school, I mean, the same culprits are going to come up again. I mean, that may not help us next year, but at least long-term. I, I just, I just, the things that we've seen that, that got cut last year, and honestly speaking, it wasn't a lot of pain for some. They absorbed it, and that can't continue. And so-
Can I ask a question on summer?
No, absolutely.
I know, Dr. Ritter, last year, when there was the cut to summer school, I made the suggestion of us as the biggest district in the area, and with facilities, you know, in north, southeast, and west, that would be able to attract and really be pretty convenient for people living in our surrounding districts. I didn't see that as an option on, on one of the things that's going to be explored, but is there a way to explore how we might be able to continue to offer summer school, not only to our students, but open it up and kind of be a regional summer school, and be able to get any revenues that would be coming from that?
We basically, we have the revenue for, for summer school, but it doesn't mean that we can't use that to help us as far as the following year. Am I correct, Mr. Chortis?
Well, the, the revenue that we receive for summer school is, is paid in arrears. So the, the revenue that we receive this year is for last summer school. So in a given fiscal year, we have the money for summer school. Now, what you're talking about, that's a possibility as long as the state continues to fund summer school.
Right, at a certain level, because I think some of the smaller districts, I mean, it's economies of scale where I think we'd be able to do some things and offer some classes that may not have enough-
I've started conversations, by the way, with superintendents on that, and I, I think they're anticipating, just like we, they have, they have some funds, they're open to it, but they haven't, they're not real excited about it. That's, that's a mild way to say it, that they're not real excited about it, but still, I think it's an excellent opportunity.
Well, I guess if it was the option, if your district could offer that service for your students, and you're going to choose not to, and being able to have that service available for your students in a different district, it seems like that would be a pretty-
Oh, yeah.
Good option for them.
And we would expect the money to follow that student from that district.
Oh, exactly, yeah.
That's where they were, yeah. I agree.
But we might be able to work something out.
Sure.
The only concern I have about that is if they were funding it in the first place and didn't have the money for it, why would they have the money to send here?
Well, I think they had cut it, they had cut it enough where it wasn't, you know, summer school used to be, quote, "a moneymaker" for districts, I mean, which never made sense to me, but, you know, you got to count your students-
Twice.
Twice, you know, and so a lot of districts built up summer school based on that and encouraged their kids to be there, and now that it's not, quote, "a moneymaker" for them, I think they're finding it harder to support what they used to do. And I'm think, you know, I just, I'm not sure if it would work, but it seems to me like it would at least be worth looking into.
Yeah. The neighboring districts are talking about credit recovery primarily, as if they're going to have summer school be a credit recovery, and that's it. Okay.
Or could we charge, I mean, could we charge for summer school classes? I mean, that's the other thing.
That's another option.
Pause.
A couple of things that, that I'd like to, to see going forward, and you've already alluded to some of these, but certainly, as quickly as possible, getting some idea from Steve with his crystal ball, exactly what we're going to need to cut. I'm sure he can give us down to the penny, surely by the end of the year.
I think we can get you, get you within five million.
Because I think that, that's going to make it a lot more real than-
Right.
And we all, we all have different things in our heads right now, sure. And so I, I'd certainly like to see that. The other thing is that I'd like to see in, in terms of these ideas that have been kind of focus grouped, is a value-add, value-added analysis of, of what the effect on student achievement is likely to be, so that we, we know which one is going to have the most impact in the classroom, because some of these concerns that parents have, that I have as a parent, I can understand and I can appreciate, but I think I'd like to make a decision. If we're making a decision about, about hurting the district, then I'd like to make the decision that hurts the district the least.
Right.
And hurts the students the least and their academic performance, then is maybe a burden on, on parents. Even though I'd like to be cognizant of that, I certainly would like to, to make sure that we, that we keep that the focus and, and have some data to, to, to use when we, not just pros and cons, this could be good, this could be bad, but, you know, this is how we figure this out, whatever rubric you're going to use, this is how we figure out the value add on this program or this cut. And, and then I'll add all, add in the pros and cons as well. I think that's very important. The other thing that- The other thing that, that I'd like, and Chris kind of alluded to as well, is I think we still need to make sure that we're open to any type of idea that anybody has that, that can result in, you know, kind of out of the box thinking of, you know, if you jimmy this one way or you do something a little different, then voila, you can save, you know, $100,000 and, and not feel it. I mean, there, there are those tweaks out there that, that different people are going to have, either a parent or, or a teacher or administrator or, or board member, whatever, that, that I think can allow us to rethink how we deliver education and, and to do it in a way that maybe can result in savings that you don't see if you're just putting together a budget every year and you're kind of adding or subtracting. And you kind of don't step away and say, wait a second, you could kind of just twist this a little bit and, and I hope that makes sense, but.
It does. We've been doing this for three years now.
Just saying.
And so we're getting, we're getting better and, and we do have the data now, you know.
I understand, but, but for example, the, the thing that kind of sticks in my mind is the, the shutdown of the schools that we did over the summer and the tremendous savings that we had from, from shutting that down. And it went, and the impact was really negligible, if nothing. And that was a tremendous savings and that was kind of the idea, you know, somebody saw that and said, hey, you can, we can, we can realize some big savings.
And we have a proposal for you on that.
Yeah, so I mean, all those different things can, can add in, you know, energy efficiencies. You know, we spend $4 million every year on energy, you know? Cutting our energy costs 10% saves us $400,000 a year, if my math's correct. So, you know, I just hope that as we go forward, we, we don't say, you know, the decision is block scheduling or three tiered or transportation and that, folks, that's what you got.
All we did was, in the focus groups, was of course to respond to the items that came out of the retreat.
Right, exactly, I understand.
We're basically going to be going beyond that now. And that's what I'm saying, we're going to go program to program now, third year in a row. And like Mr. Lee said, it's probably going to be four years. And so we just got a plan.
And then the final thing, the final thing is something I've kind of brought up before, which is, you know, a further explanation or exploration of, you know, regional transportation.
Yes.
And looking, and if Jerry's correct and, you know, the state's going to start pulling back in transportation, then maybe we need to start looking, talking to the city and the county and, and other entities to see whether or not there's a whole new way of, of thinking about getting our kids to and from school and, and what the savings can be there. So I certainly, I hope that would be something that's, that's looked at as well.
Feel free to send me an email with your list anytime because I, you know, I think it's going to be, and we got to look at every one of them. Okay.
Well, I, I attended a talk, I think last Monday, where Jim Moody gave us a potential of, and Mr. Chudus and Mr. Evers were there, gave us a potential of the state budget picture. And it, and it is grim and it's a loss of capital gains revenue, sales, capital gains tax revenue, sales tax revenue, a lot of other factors. And, and he pointed out what Mr. Lee just did, that it's probably 2013 or 2014 before the whole picture recovers. And what concerns me, we can save all the money we want and, and unless we step back and look at this a little more globally, we're, we're still not going to accomplish what we want to do through savings of, of most of all the projects we've talked about. And I think what, what I'd like to see us look at is talking with our community and our stakeholders and saying, what do, do you as a community want? Do you want state control of your school district's funding or do you want local control of your school district's funding? And, and this may require some outreach. Are these, are these numbers here that Mr. Manis discovered, do they reflect our ability to reach our community and tell the story about the revenue picture and the expense picture and all this? Do they, do they reflect the confidence our community has in, in, in the district and the Board of Education? But I think that the question is going to come down to people in this community saying, we want to control our destiny. We don't want Jefferson City or Washington DC to do so. And are we willing to step up to the plate or not? And I, I think that's going to be an uphill battle, but I think we have to have that discussion with, with the community.
Good point, because there's several districts or states that have won race to the top. Was it four of the, anyway, a majority of them that won race to the top want to back out now because of the requirements coming from the federal government on that. And we're talking millions of dollars. And so, and really that does bog you down. And there's no proof in the pudding on the federal level whether that works or not. So I, I'm sure there's a lot of states right now that would agree with you.
Ms. Callen?
And I would agree with Dr. Prater. I think having gone through this five, six years ago, I think that's exactly what we said to our community. And I think we're in better shape now because our reliance on state money in particular was supplanted by local support. And so, you know, since I've been on the board, the, the percentages of, when you look at our local, state, and federal and the percentages those funds contribute to our overall budget, the local support has grown. And I think that that's good because I think that that's, in times like this, you have more control over what you do. And so I would agree, I think one of the things that was very helpful when we went through this six years ago was really to create a two-tiered budget that showed people, this is what it would be like if we don't do anything. This is what it would be like with, you know, a fifteen cent levy increase. And I think if you can start to show people what they lose and what they gain, there's, they're able to identify it more than just, oh, it's a fifteen cent levy. Well, what does that mean? It means this, it means that, it means this, it means that. And so I, I would like, I think our budget discussion has to always include, you know, whether there is an opportunity for our community, because that's who we represent, to make a commitment to greater local control.
I think you're going to find the more we have local control, the better our performance is going to be. In fact, I think there's quite a bit of argument out there right now to prove that point. Before No Child Left Behind, the performance was pretty good. It's gone down since No Child Left Behind started in 2000. And so, and that's really, it's not a Republican, it's not a Democrat issue.
You mean general performance, right?
Overall performance, yes. I'm talking about the whole child.
Not just, you're not talking about Springfield's performance?
Oh, no, I'm talking, no, no, no. Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, across the nation. Clarifying. So, anything else?
And one concern, you know, at some point in, who knows when, the state, the leadership in the state is going to have to figure out that you can't cut your way down to success.
I think.
You can't. And, and I don't know when, when that's going to be realized. You know, as Ms. Callen said, you know, we've cut the low hanging fruit already. And so Mr. Hawesmer's comments are right on, we're going to have to sit down and start looking at and prioritizing a lot of things that is going to impact the classroom. I mean, even when you cut central office, you impact classroom. And so in some cases, by just not having support, the autonomy, the responsibilities are passed down to the classroom. And I think Mr. Hawesmer's comment of really looking at what's our core mission, what's our mission critical, and that's kids. And, and that's where you want to stay as far away from as you can. And I don't think we're, we're there. And, and, but it gets back to what's the least impact as opposed to a no impact. I don't think we're at a no impact anymore. I think we're to what's the least damage that we do to the classroom at this point over the next couple of years than, until something happens. And I know that concerns me that, you know, no one's looking at the other side of the equation. It's always focused on this side of the equation and nobody's talking about the other side. And that can't continue forever. And I don't have a silver bullet, but at some point, that's going to have to be addressed.
Now, Mr. McDonald said it very well, the gentleman from Atlanta, who basically did the, the study here for the chamber and now is currently doing the study for the state as far as economic development. And made it very, very clear that education drives economic development. And it's been cut to the bone already, especially in Missouri, especially on the higher ed level as well as K-12. And he says it's got to stop. And so that's his recommendation to stop it. Now, the other thing that I, I want to mention, we have cut 15 million, okay? And I just want to remind everybody of that. And so I, you know, and basically, as far as staffing is concerned, we are going to look at attrition first, okay? But that, this time, we can't stop at attrition. So we're going to have, we're on a pretty short timeline if we are going to get into reduction. So, I'm sorry, Jean.
Ms. Twitty?
That actually kind of led into, I was thinking back to some of the points that you made that, that were going to be addressed, cabinet taking a look at all programs.
Right.
And value added issues. This is November and we begin this budget prep early and early every year. So I'm assuming that this assessment of these programs obviously has been ongoing and there's, you've arrived at some decision on some or some point at, on some. How quickly are we going to be hearing about those programs? You're going to roll it out, all out at one time? Is it something, because it's going to be hard to make those decisions if it all comes at one point. And, you know, that's a pretty big, that's a pretty big challenge to evaluate every program and then make recommendations to us as to what should stand and what should go.
Like I said, we've been at this for three years, so it's not going to be simple, but we do have the data, quite a bit of the data already. As far as timeline, we're meeting tomorrow as cabinet to have that conversation. We didn't know how you would react. And so, so we, we want to kind of, we're weighing that a little bit. And so our timeline, as far as cabinet is, we're meeting very, very intensely as cabinet is concerned, and we're going to continue to put together a plan and we're going to share that plan with the board. And so this is our first effort as far as communicating the feedback, but also there is a, what I would call kind of a gray plan that I gave you as far as what we need to do as far as process is concerned. Now we need to follow through with that process and give you a timeline. The timeline, the first timeline you saw was January the eight, whatever it was, 18th, I think it was. You know, that's, that's going to be probably, the latest will be as far as some development rollout as far as central office is concerned.
And I do want to, you know, the last recommendation you had on your list, that was I think it's really, really important that we keep the external and internal stakeholders involved in the loop.
That's right.
Even as we prioritize, as we talk about value added, they've got to be in that loop. And so, you know, I, and I know as cabinet and you present stuff to us, you know, the stakeholders in this community have got to be at the table.
Right.
And, and I'm sure you will, but I just want to get, reinforce that, that that's really key to doing anything.
And can I say that not everybody's going to be happy?
I don't anticipate that. Sometimes that's a good decision when everybody's unhappy, I don't know.
Mr. Hawesmer?
A couple of, a couple of other things. One thing that, that I also think is important is, and I think it was when we had this meeting about, about, or coming together with, coming up with these two or three areas we wanted you to look at. And, and somebody at the board table made the comment about, I think it was maybe the block schedule and the seven hour schedule, whether or not the research or the data suggests that perhaps a seven hour is better as an educational strategy or an, or delivering educational content. I, I want us to make sure that, that in those situations, if there's something in the district that, that the research says you can change this and we're just doing it because we've always done it that way.
Oh, yes, yes.
And it's always just kind of been its way, it's gone. But if that's something that actually is increases student, or is better for kids and we save money, then you got to put those at the front of the table and, and not continue to do something just because we've done it for 20 years this way and, and.
I might have missed that.
And I'm sure that we've done that. I'm just, I want to make sure that, that, you know, because there's some of these things that, you know, people are resistant to change because it's been done a certain way, maybe, and I don't know, again, I don't know what.
Mr. Hawesmer, that was really, I was supposed to say that right up front in the, in the block schedule, no matter what, we're going to do what's best as far as, unless, unless economics get in the way, we're going to come up with the best solution as far as.
No, I understand, I understand that, but there are certain things that we do, I'm, I'm guessing in our district, that we've done them just the way we've done them the same way. And doing them a different way is actually, would save you money and would be better for educational outcome of our kids. Those things should be right at the top of the things we do and we should do those without regard to, without regard to logistics and without regard to other, do that make sense?
Yes.
Well, my comment on that would be when we talk about the low hanging fruit that we've done.
You think we've already got it all?
No. No, actually, I would, I would go back to the issue of start times. We tried. We tried. And I wrote down the comment, I think that Mr. Manis meant, said that in these focus groups that there was, at the end of the day, there was a general, I wrote, general feeling that teachers, staff would do whatever it did, whatever it took to, to make something happen. And I think start times have already been qualified as being advantageous educationally to our children. And that was some low hanging fruit that perhaps we didn't pluck or at least didn't take a step further.
At that time, it was.
At that time, because we didn't have the economic emergency.
That's right.
And it's, you know, that's why we're having to react, I think, perhaps in this case, which actually leads me to just one other point about, talking about levy, is just for general knowledge, because everybody knows we're talking about it here, what are, what are our available dates for election if we were to have a levy? What's sitting in front of us?
That would be February, April, June, August, November, February, April, June, August, February.
And if, if this board were, were to consider that, what's our timeframe on having to act, to take action?
If we were to go February, is it November 30th? And so as far as April, I believe it's January 20, anyway, it's in January.
The same as the board. So hurry up.
Questions?
Okay. Appreciate, appreciate the conversation and we'll be back, I guarantee you, more and more and more and more. Okay. And I want to thank Mr. Manis for all his work. I don't know how many hours he put into this, but it was a ton. And I also want to thank the staff who came forward with him and are very, very frank in their presentations. So I really want to say it over and over again, that we have a high performing system that's doing extremely well. And I'm just really struggling with the whole fact that we have to cut back and, and go after. Now, I do think even if a miracle turned, and everything turned around overnight, we still are going to learn from this and do a couple of things to be more efficient and effective. So I want to thank you.
Yeah. I sense more staff time coming down the road, so.
Yeah.
Moving on, revisions to the strategic plan, SP 5.
Dr. Ritter?
Mr. Manis? Mr. Manis?
Thank you, Dr. Ritter. Just as a reminder, the original SP 5 was adopted by the board in September 2007. The last revision was approved in September 2009 of last year, last year, obviously. Revisions for board approval are made during the superintendent's cabinet retreat. We have for you tonight a very brief change, or some subtle changes to the strategic plan. So I can see them, because I didn't wear my glasses. We have moved the percent of students and staff with positive perceptions of the environment. This is just aligning with the, the proper performance indicator in terms of what the, the cabinet felt was more accurate to the increased student engagement, responsibility for learning. So that was just a matter of moving that particular item up to 2.3. One area that is of significance, and this comes from extensive stakeholder input, we are working, and as you see, it's in development, a measurement for percent of students adequately prepared for their workplace in higher education. We will be sharing with you the approaches that we're discussing in the next few months as how we would like to attain that through a variety of measurements. One being through community relations and some random survey process, but also in addition to that, some existing measurements that Dr. Goodman is working on that we feel like will be very powerful in terms of reporting out success to our stakeholders. So that particular item is in development. The reason why you have a cross through on the, the item that refers to participating in career and technical programs, we felt like that could be captured in the new. career and technical programs, we felt like that could be captured in the new process of identifying how we adequately prepare students for the workplace and higher ed. So, some very minor changes there. As, as we noted in the development SP5, this is a very flexible document, and we continue to make changes to it. It will be for your approval, I guess, in the next meeting.
In December.
Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Manis?
My only question, I guess you kind of answered, is how you're going to measure the percent of students adequately prepared for the workplace and higher education. So, good luck on that.
Right. We were, we're in the process of looking at those as we speak. I will give you, from the standpoint of community development, one very simple way would be to do a survey of students, given maybe a five-year timeframe post-graduation, and we would literally call those students and contact them and find out their current status in terms of academic and employment and things of that nature. Also, and Mrs. Kissinger perhaps can fill you in on some of the general concepts that Dr. Goodman's looking at in terms of those measurements.
One of the things I think we realize is that it's going to be probably multiple measures within that measure. So, Mr. Manis's survey that he's talking about would be one thing, but to fully capture preparedness, we may need to look at pre-measures. For example, the number of students that are taking those career and technical education classes, the number percent of students that are, that are taking advanced courses that are going to ensure that they're prepared for college. There is actually a, a measure we can get from ACT that tells us a percent of students that are demonstrating preparedness to be successful in college. So, what we envision is identifying a set of measures that, together combined, will give us an indication of how well-prepared our students are for college and the workplace. And what we've, one of the things we've learned is that probably a recommendation, particularly for that one, because it is a very complex measure, it's obviously very important, that's really our purpose, is to make sure when kids graduate from Springfield Public Schools that they can be successful in the workplace or career, that we may identify four or five measures that capture that and use those almost as measures that we test for a year or so and look at and say, is this data really giving us the indication we know we need it to before we set it and stone as a measure? So, we look at experimenting maybe with some measures over the next year or so to set, to settle then eventually on a set of possibly three to five that, that would give us a good indication of how well we're doing in that area.
One thing, oh, I was, one thing I would encourage you to, and I know some of the staff is participating in the P-20 Regional Council, which, that's one of the aspects of trying to track, whether it's through how many SPS students taking remedial classes at a college level, or the workplace is a little bit harder to track, but at least through the college and higher education. I know that's one of the things that we're looking at, is how do we identify or track some way...
That's a great example of one measure, but alone, just like the survey may not alone be enough, because one of the limitations with that is that it's, there are only the students that go to Missouri Public Universities or Colleges will be entered in that data. Will it kind of then skews the results, because we may have a lot of students that go to private institutions, it's institutions outside of the state of Missouri, and they may or may not need remediation. And so, that's, that's a great example of why we need multiple measures for that particular indication.
And we're addressing that, trying to figure out, how do we deal with that of so many of them are going to private schools.
Dr. Netso, who's working with the Governor, and is really heading up all the education, is really zeroing in on that whole concept and looking at not just public, Missouri Public, but Paulina Graduate, and then seeing what they can do as far as collecting data around that, because the biggest expense they have in the state of Missouri, or really in all states, is retaining students. In other words, students are leaving in droves by the time they're sophomores. And so, they're trying to figure out what better ways to retain students, and part of that is their preparation, so. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manis. Moving on, we, at our last study session, we approved the tax anticipation note financing. We do have a couple of items for separate consideration tonight, and the first is 2009, 2010 audit. Mr. Chodas?
Thank you. On Board docs, you will find a audit management letter from our independent auditors, as well as the audit report for the 2009, 10 fiscal year. I'm very pleased that for the 18th year in a row, this year's audit is an unqualified audit. Should be noted that less than 3% of the school districts in the state receive unqualified audits, and I would like to thank the Finance Department and especially John Everest for their efforts in working with the auditors to prepare the audit report. The fee for the audit was $28,000, and this was included in the audit proposal per the contract. And I would like to invite Mr. Al Kirchhafer, President of Daniel Jones &amp; Associates, our independent auditor, to come up and speak briefly to the Board.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. I know this is the exciting part of the, the Board meeting. Everybody loves to talk about the audit. They're actually so exciting, they're having another one. I know that was cheap, but hey, I figured I'd take it while I could get it right. As Steve said, this is the unqualified opinion, and you like that, huh? It is our sixth year performing the audit for the district. A little bit of background of our firm, we audit 24 school districts in the state, along with 10 charter schools. I can tell you that without any hesitation, you guys are one of the most organized school districts. So, with that being said, I'm glad actually you guys are the ones being audited, and not any of the other districts. You guys received unqualified opinion on your financial statements. There was no state findings, and when we look at state findings, it's budget, on the budget area and on transportation and attendance. And then there was two reports issued on internal controls over federal programs, and there was no findings on your federal programs. So, again, an excellent year, and actually, the federal programs were a little bit more complicated this year because of error funds, so it required about twice as much work as normal. You received a little over $33 million in federal funds, and you'll also continue that next year. They're anticipating that it will end after the 2010, 2011 year, but there has been talk about maybe continuing that. We'll wait and see what happens. So, any questions?
Question for Ms. Chodas, Ms. Callen?
No, I just have a couple of comments or observations, I guess. So, you say in, in your letter that less than 3% of school districts meet the standards that we've met now for 18 years?
The standard's actually, a full accrual district, there's only, is it six or seven? And they're, they're dropping off. Most of the districts are what they call ACBOA, other comprehensive base of accounting. The Springfield School District does full accrual accounting, and there's less than, it was seven or eight, and then one of them dropped out of it because of the, the amount of work that's required.
So, to a layman, could you just compare, is one more comprehensive than the other in terms of...
Extremely comprehensive, yes. This, to kind of give you an idea, this is probably a additional 120 hours on our audit side of additional work, and to kind of give you an idea from the staff side, it's, it's extremely amount of work. I, I think in St. Louis County, there's two districts, Rockwood School District, and I believe Hazelwood, Hazelwood may have dropped out, and Special School District, St. Louis.
So, we're meeting standards at a higher, we're meeting unqualified audit at a higher standard than most districts are even asked to present.
That's correct. DESI requires that you have financial statements, and they can be reported in what they call ACBOA, the other comprehensive base of accounting.
And you made a comment that you audited the state funds that we receive?
We audited all your funds. So, everything that comes through, what we do is we actually get confirmations from the state, from DESI, and make sure that the information in this audit report is fairly stated.
And your cost to us was about $28,000?
Twenty-eight thousand, I think it was like 50 bucks, $20,000, $50. I, like, numbers.
We'll give you the 50. But I, I guess, I just find it interesting that we're now being required to go through a state audit that's costing us six and a half times this amount of money.
Yeah.
And expending additional staff time that's already been put into the audit that we're required to do annually. And, you know, at a, at a meeting where we're hearing about the kinds of cuts that we're going to have to make, and the kinds of programs that we're looking at that are going to cost, that, you know, could save us $100,000, you know, and those are the kinds of things we're looking at, and we're looking at having to expend 180 to have work done that appears to have already been done for us.
And the disruption of the staff, you're looking at nine to probably 10 months. I work with the state, we're contracted actually with the State Auditor's Office to do financial audits for third-class counties, and their audits are a little bit different than ours. We do a financial audit, they do a compliance audit. In essence, they look at every transaction.
I, I guess I just find the cost to the district from another governmental entity that's, you know, costing our taxpayers that much money is, is, it doesn't make sense when you've come to us for the last few years and, you know, can do the same kind of work for a significant amount less. Just maybe more a point than anything else.
Any other questions? Mr. Hosmer?
Just a couple. Explain in plain English the unqualified audit.
I'm going to explain it in education terms. It's an A-plus.
What?
It's an A-plus.
Well, that's good. I like that. It's very simple for, for me to understand. And then, and Chris kind of alluded to this, but your understanding of the difference between the audit you did for Springfield Public Schools and the audit that we're currently undergoing with the Auditor's Office.
Yeah, you had a financial audit here, what they're going to be doing is a compliance audit, they're going to look at more operational, they probably won't even touch on the education side, they're going to look at all procedures, transactions. We select 40 payroll and 40 accounts payable distributions, make sure things are coded properly. They'll eventually look at probably every transaction. Where they'll focus on is your P-cards, your cellphones, your travel. Those are the hot topics that the State Auditor's look at.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? You said you thought, you heard that they were going to continue the, our funds?
There's talks, there's talk, we're getting information pretty much on a regular basis, and there's been requests because of the economic condition that they're not seeing a turnaround in the next year, and there's a possibility that we could have additional funds go past 2011. And the one thing I did want to point out, Dr. Rider did mention Rockwood School District, and I don't know if you guys are familiar with Rockwood, but in addition to Rockwood, they have Special School District, which is another taxing entity on top of it. So, when you take a look at your SSD, when you look at your special ed, that's a considerable cost, that there's another dollar five packed, tacked on to Rockwood's already 375. So, it's a big difference. So, you can't really compare unless you pull that Special School District portion in. So, for the value, it's amazing what you can do with the money. If you guys want to move to St. Louis? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, I would entertain a motion to, do we approve or accept the audit? Ms. Chodas?
Accept.
Accept, okay. It says approve. I would entertain a motion that the Board accept the 2009, 2010 audit as prepared by Daniel Jones &amp; Associates.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Dr. Prater and a second by Ms. Callen that the Board approve, accept the 2009, 2010 audit. Any other questions? Mr. Hosmer?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chodas, and thank you, Mr. Kirchhafer, appreciate, thank you for everything you Moving on, get organized here. Treasury Report. Had to get my glasses. Nope, can't get out now. Yeah, 7.02 Treasury Report, Mr. Chodas.
Thank you. If you'll open up the Treasury Report and look at the financial statement for the month of October, point out a couple of things. Obviously, the, the major revenue areas, on property taxes, we were up $126,000 or 54% from last October's collections. Fiscal year-to-date, we're up $482,000 or about 30%, but keep in mind, we are looking at only about 2% of our total amount for the year at this point in time. And I'll give you a little heads-up, we did receive the numbers for November, and the November collections came in about $59,000 higher than last November. So, property taxes looking good so far this year, with the big months still to come. Sales tax collections for the month were up about $49,000 or 3% from the previous October. Fiscal year-to-date, we're up about $85,000 or 1 and 1/2%. The, if you look at the other state revenue, you'll notice that we have not received anything yet this year. This is due to a delay in the early childhood special ed payment. We should start receiving this revenue in November. And one other thing I'd like to point out is the transportation revenue. It is down significantly from last year, but once again, the budget is also down significantly as we anticipated the reduction. So, for the year, we've collected about 15 and 1/2% of our budgeted revenue compared to last year's collection at this time of about 13 and 1/2% of the amount received for the year, and total expenditures are tracking right with last year, about 21% last year and about 21% this year. Any questions on the Treasury Report?
Questions for Mr. Chodas. Mr. Hosmer?
Yeah, just a quick question. What scares you going forward for this budget? Is there anything out there that's scaring you?
Um, once again, it's the state, you know, if the state has to cut mid-year or, as they did last year, actually near, near the end of the year, which really...
But in terms of everything else coming in, you're, it's coming in kind of as you...
As we anticipated, yes.
As we anticipated, because there's nothing out there that you kind of can, is making you a little jittery.
Well, you know.
Other than those withholdings.
The, the big property tax month is still to come, so.
You're jittery, we're jittery. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Chodas? I would entertain a motion that the Board approve the Treasury Report as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Twitty and a second by Ms. Callen, the Board approve the Treasury Report. Any other questions? Comments? Dr. Coleman?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chodas. Moving on to routine action items presented there, if there are no changes to the action items, the Board may approve these in one motion.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Callen, a second by Dr. Prater, that the Board approve each of the routine action items as submitted. Any questions? Mr. Hosmer?
Aye.
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 Moving on to general consent items that you have listed there from the November 2nd study session, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Callen.
Second.
Always helpful. And a second by Dr. Prater, that the Board approve each recommendation submitted by the administration in the general consent items. Any other questions? Dr. Coleman?
Aye.
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 No informational items, comments from the Board, legislative report. Any legislative report anybody has?
Oh, I met with the legislators.
We had a reception last week with several legislators. It was a good meeting. I don't know that we heard anything new, but at least we had an opportunity to...
Two new faces.
Two new faces.
Yeah.
To express our legislative priorities that were on our list, so that was a good opportunity. I don't know if any of you there want to expand on the discussion or not, but...
I would say, other than the fact that the, the legislators that were present and those that were newly elected seemed to want to sit pretty tight-lipped and not commit to anything, and, which I think is a real, we knew this, an indicator, but they did seem to appreciate the format that we used for presenting the legislative priorities, and I think the fact that the bullet points that we put with them are helpful. Don't know how much good they're going to do, but it was a good meeting.
I saw that we tried to hammer home to them that decisions they make need to be backed by data and not by the knee-jerk reaction.
backed by data and not by the knee-jerk reaction. You know, we talked about charters and vouchers, and I'm sure many in the board read the New York, the article that was submitted to us, and about the charter schools and studies showing that 77% of all charter schools perform same or worse than public schools. That's a fantastic, not a fantastic number, but it's a bewildering number when you would think in the community out there that the complete answer to all of public education's woes is charter schools, when 77% don't get it done. And, well, that's a, that's not a good percentage to bet your money on. So, hopefully, what they take from that meeting at least is, even if you don't have the money, the decisions you make, you know, make sure there's some data behind them and not just talking points somewhere, because if you don't look behind the talking points, you don't see, you don't see the truth. And so, that's, I think it's an important point. Hopefully, they came away at least thinking about that.
I thought they seemed, as we talked about the data warehouse and what we were able to do, what the parents were able to do, the students, teachers, et cetera, that maybe they'd heard us talk about it, they just didn't know what we could do with it. And I think it's something that every opportunity we have, when we can provide them with that data, it gives them a powerful voice, or at least something behind their words to say why it is they're taking a position pro or con, and make them, give them some information as to what's taking place specifically out of here. So, I thought that part of the meeting was very good also.
Listen to that.
And I know that Ms. Callen might chime in, even at the state level, certainly through MSBA, it's pretty much a flurry of activity with new leadership, new reps, and new people at the table. It's starting earlier than it has in the past, and so, a lot of posturing and a lot of information sharing going on already at the state level, so.
James Scholler, you know, second in command as far as the legislature's concerned, so, the House. It's good.
Any other legislative issues or concerns? Future issues? Dr. Prater?
Just one, and it stems from the legislative issues and some of our discussion earlier. You know, I think they have, the legislature and the legislators don't have a whole lot of power to increase the budget, and I just really would like to see all of us as a board put our thinking caps on about local control and local revenue control, and keep in mind timing of those things, because I think the sooner that we know what our future budget is going to look like, the more effective our staff can be in terms of making plans for next year.
Good point. Any other, other, other?
I do want to follow up on the, Rockwood does look to us as their comparison and do quite a few things that we do. And that's a real feather in our hat. And so, Columbia was there at the table as well as Park Hill, and so, really, there's a reason the four districts are at the table having conversations. And so, I think we need to realize that they see us as someone to model as well. And the conversation around Cognos just blew them away. And they know they need to get there. They're not there, and they see themselves spending an awful lot of money because they don't have Cognos. They really do. There's a lot of staffing going on to get the data when the Cognos can take care of it with just one push and a button, so, anyway.
Any other? Ms. Callen?
I just wanted to let people know that it's that time to start to prepare the, I think it's the fifth Community Focus Report, the Community Report Card. And I've been asked to chair the Education Subcommittee, and Dr. Goodman has agreed to be on that committee. He was an amazing support last time in terms of being able to look at data and figure out how we should present the information in a way that the layperson would understand. And so, I think Springfield Public Schools hopefully will be well-represented on that Subcommittee, and I think that's been a marvelous tool for our community to really drive a lot of decisions in private and funding of needs philanthropic, through philanthropic opportunities, and also how we collaborate across the board in the community to really address some pretty drastic needs that are out there, so.
One other thing I just thought of, I was hoping that I would be able to announce that with the Missouri Vision, Public Education Vision Project, that during the month of November, probably December now, they were going to have community meetings and go around the community, and I'm assuming Springfield will be one of those, or at least close by. And I was hoping to be able to announce a date so we could at least get that out to do that, but I have not seen a date. And, but there's one coming that will bring some information to the community and about what they want to see their public education in Missouri look like down the road. So, excited about that opportunity, but I wish I had more data to tell you. I don't know if it'll happen before our next meeting on the 8th or not, but I hope it gives us more time to set something up. Any other comments or thoughts? Remind you that in your board docs is your financial and operations report for October. If you had a chance to look at that, plus deltas, get to fill out your plus deltas. And we do need to go into executive session, so I would entertain a motion that the board meet in executive session following this meeting to discuss legal and real estate matters as provided in Section 16021, 1, 2, RSMO.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Prater, and a second by Ms. Callen, that we go into executive session. Dr. Holman?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Turn to go into executive session.
It shouldn't take more than five minutes, because there aren't any attorneys in there.
It's usually quicker.